Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call the Wilmington Board of Selectmen to session here at 7:10. We do apologize for being a few minutes late. All members are present with the exception of Selectman Samaglia, who unfortunately could not be here tonight. We are thrilled to have so many young handsome men here in front of us. What a special night for us as a board to have you here. So we will get into the agenda. I wanted to start off by just acknowledging once again, as I did in the previous meeting, that this month, in the month of October, is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So I want to thank all the members of the Board, Beverly and the Town Manager, Mr. Hall, for wearing pink this evening. The Board, every year, prides itself in trying to support all worthy causes, and certainly breast cancer is one of those. As I had mentioned in the last meeting, in looking at some of the statistics, according to the American Cancer Society, breast cancer is one of the most common forms of cancer in women, other than skin cancer. And unfortunately, it also affects about 1% of men. About 1 in 8 women in the U.S. will develop some type of cancer during their lifetime. The positive news is that with the awareness such as in the month of October, as well as early detection assistance programs and improvement in treatment, millions of women are surviving this insidious disease. So tonight, as a Board, as we wear an article of pink clothing, we want to continue our support, admiration, and honor of these people and their families who have and continue to be so deeply affected by this disease. Thank you. So moving right into our agenda, which will start with the transmitting of the Treasury Warrant 1616A, 17 and 17A. Do I have a motion?
So moves?
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Yes.
All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to our first appointment, which was due for 7:00 PM this evening, which is the recognition of the Wilmington Little League All-Stars, the 2014 District 13 Champions. So in preparation for this evening, I asked the Town Manager, as well as Bev, to reach out to your coaches to get a little bit of a history as to just what you've accomplished. Certainly, we've followed it in the newspapers, but you really have been on quite a run here. So I wanted to just read for the public and to share with you that we, as a Board, are aware of all the wonderful things that you've been doing. And this started with your first All-Star game that took place on Sunday, January 29th, versus North Reading. And it's our understanding that you played four games in a pool play, and the top two teams in pools A and B advanced to the District 13 playoffs. Wilmington beat Woburn, which is a longtime rival here in the town, by 4,1000ths of a run allowed per inning, which is .7 to .6996, for any of you mathematicians that want to calculate that. I don't know that I fully understand that, but it was enough to get you to advance to the playoff round. You, as a team, for the town of Wilmington, went on to beat Acton-Barksboro 5 to 4 in the semifinals at Acton. And then, leading up to the championship game, where Wilmington beat Weston, who are the defending District 13 champs, by a score of 12 to 10 in the District 13 championship game at Weifer Park in Woburn on July 12th. From what I'm told from your coaches and from some of your family members, it was an absolute thrilling victory and a total team effort from all of you as players. It's evident in your success that you had quality pitching, timely hitting, which you scored all the runs that you needed to win, and you played outstanding defense as a team. It's my personal philosophy that the hits will come, but defense truly wins championships. So it's my understanding that you had an outstanding run there during the summer. Wilmington has now won the district championship in 1977, 2007, and 2014, and that means that the town has only won three times in the last 61 years, and you are representative of one of those three teams. What a tremendous accomplishment. There are 16 districts in Massachusetts, which means that you are one of the top 16 teams in the state. Brian Kane, who is your manager and your coach, has been coaching in the Wilmington Little League for 28 years. And personally, Brian, I don't think you look older than 28, so that's a credit to you. And certainly, we, as a Board, will spend a few minutes sharing our comments, but I wanted to offer, as Chair of the Board, my sincere congratulations to all of you as players, and also to your coaches, and also to the family members that are here. So many of you that are here tonight to celebrate this accomplishment, or these young men, you play such an integral role in what is being presented here tonight. Certainly, you spend a lot of time and effort in getting your children from point A to B, and trying to be all places at once, and trying to make a living, and putting a roof and nice warm meals on the table. So we appreciate you spending the time with us tonight, and we're thrilled to celebrate your accomplishments. So I'd like to open it up to Brian, if you'd like to make any comments. Then after that, I'm going to open it up to the Board, and then the Manager will read off names on the certificates, and I will present them to the young men. And then we'll get a group photo, and then you're free to be dismissed from the meeting. Okay?
Thank you, first of all, Judy, and to the entire Board, you know, for recognizing this great team and, you know, great group of kids. It was a lot of fun. I had a great time coaching them. I don't know if anyone expected us to do as well as we did, but, you know, I think it's something that they'll remember for a long time. Lucky to have, you know, two great coaches with me, and, you know, the support of all the parents throughout the summer. And, you know, it was just a great experience, and it's something that, you know, I hope they'll remember for years to come.
Thank you. So at this time, I'd like to open it up to the Board. Oftentimes, we present certificates, and then people disperse, and the Board would like to extend their kind comments to you. So I'd like to start with my left and just offer everyone on the panel here an opportunity to share any words that they might like to at this time.
Thank you. I'll be real brief. I'll start simply by saying congratulations, as Judy said. Congratulations to you guys, and if I can give you one little flavor of advice here is suck the marrow out of this experience. This is a great time for you. Enjoy every moment of the championship, because you don't know how many more championships you may experience in your life. So this is going to be a tremendous memory that you'll carry with you for the rest of your life as young men and way into your adulthood. And I'll also say thank you very much for representing Wilmington. As you traveled around the district and played these other teams, you represented this town, and you did so as gentlemen and as good sportspeople. So we appreciate that very much, because it reflects right on the town of Wilmington, and you did us very proud. Congratulations.
Once again, there's really not more to say. The Chairperson and Selectman Shampoo said it all. Once again, congratulations. I see behind you, kids, your parents are smiling from cheek to cheek, so it shows a lot of excitement. And you guys did a great job, and I know your coaches there, they're fantastic people. And once again, congratulations. As the Chairperson said, at the end of this segment, you're able to be dismissed, but if you want to stay for the rest of the meeting, we haven't had this crowd in a long time, you know? So, and I feel a lot safer with everyone here, too, as a matter of fact. We're not talking anymore. But once again, guys, congratulations, and, you know, you did a great job, and you did the town really proud. And once again, thanks.
Just quickly, excuse me, add to what's been said and echo what's been said, really. Congratulations to all of you. It's special to play any sport together, but when you win and come together and enjoy success at such a young age, it's...
Equally special. I also am reminded of the fact that you've redeemed my Little League All-Star team. We lost to Woburn National at Weifer Park in the first round, first game, so thanks for evening the score. Thank you.
Do you want to say anything?
Again, just to echo the comments, congratulations. Certainly, baseball, as with any of these sports, is a team effort, and it requires everyone to hang in there together. And it appears that you've demonstrate a real team effort, each, you know, picking each other up and contributing in some way. So congratulations and all the best.
Thank you. So at this time, I'm going to step to the front, and Town Manager Hall is going to read off the names of the certificates. If each young man would like to come forward and receive his certificate, and if we can just try and make a group up here to the front and get one group photo, and we should be assembling the champions.
Okay, let's see. First, we're going to start with Tristan Champa. And also to the Coach, in recognition of your exceptional performance as manager of the Wilmington Little League All-Star Team, 2014 District 3 Champions, Brian Kane. And then, in recognition of your exceptional performance as the Coach of the Wilmington Little League All-Star Team, 2014 District 3 Champions, Scott Monroe.
Let's get a group photo, and I'll try and cuddle in as best I can. One more?
Oh, let's see. Let's see here. Any other ones? Have another one. Sorry, we don't have one, but we'll get you one.
That's Coach Petty, so...
Want to get two rows?
Want to get two rows?
Yeah.
Maybe have...
Yes.
So we did have one certificate for Coach Petty. It was stuck to Coach Kane, so...
Press it side down.
All right, I think we're good.
Congratulations.
Coach, we do have, just, this is a gentleman, I don't know if anyone else has seen it. Okay, great. Take care.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Good chance of actually...
Okay, gentlemen, let's go. Five oh. Let's go, five oh.
You're welcome to sit down.
Yes.
Oh, yes, yes.
He's got basketball.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Good night. Should've just give it one quick minute to resume. So moving on to our next appointment, with Scott C. Grant, Chairman of the 4th of July Committee, with reference to the request to use the Town Common for tree lighting ceremony on December 6, 2014. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chairperson's tough act of follow-up. Our request is to use the Town Common on Saturday, December 6, from 4 to 7:00 PM for the annual tree lighting sponsored and organized by the 4th of July Committee. As has been the case in the past, we will have horse-drawn hayrides, hot chocolate and cookies, ice sculpture sponsored, excuse me, by the Wilmington Chamber of Commerce and some of its members, Wilmington firefighters collecting toys for Wilmington children, Wilmington Community Fund selling this year's Wilmington Christmas tree ornaments, local clergy reading the Christmas story, Methodist Church Choir, the Minutemen with, Wilmington Minutemen with lanterns. And Santa will arrive at 6:00 PM, courtesy of Wilmington Fire Department, and will be available to meet with children after he lights the Town Common for us. And there'll be photos available with Santa inside the 4th of July building.
Wonderful. Anything?
The no issues were certainly in full support of Santa and the holiday.
Wonderful.
It's a bad stance to be otherwise.
Someone like to make a motion to grant Santa access to the Common?
Yes, certainly. I'll move to grant Santa and the 4th of July Committee access to the Wilmington Common on December 6.
Do we have a second?
Second?
All those in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks. Have a good evening.
Thank you, you, too. Okay, moving on to our next appointment is for the Board of Selectmen discussion regarding the review of proposed special town meeting warrant. I'll turn it over to you, Jeff.
Madam Chair, as the Board is aware, we have four articles proposed for consideration to special town meeting that will, subject to the Board's approval, is slated to occur on December 4 at 7:00 PM at the Middle School Auditorium, 25 Carter Lane. The articles, and I, if you wish, I can just highlight them as opposed to reading through them. The first article is seeking to raise and appropriate or borrow funds to purchase the Restucha rink. Article 2 is to accept a section of the General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53 F and a Half, which allows for the establishment of an enterprise fund. Enterprise funds are used for certain types of programs, including municipalities that run golf courses, for example, in some cases for water and sewer operations. And essentially, it's a revolving account of sorts in which the money that is taken in from the service goes back into the funding of the enterprise, in this case, the rink. So Article 2 would seek to seek establishment of enterprise fund. Article 3 would be to authorize the town, if necessary, to dispose of any personal property related to the rink, in addition to, also to authorize the town to contract with a third party for the administration, the running of a rink. This isn't to say that this is the approach that's been considered necessarily, but it gives us the option in the event that, once the existing lease expires in August of 2018, the town, you know, prior to that, will need to have set up a means to operate the rink if, in fact, residents choose to purchase it. Article 4 is an article that was intended to be brought to the annual town meeting due to an oversight. It was not included in the warrant, but it essentially seeks to allow for shared parking amongst contiguous property that is not under the same ownership. And right now, that is not permitted, but in this, if this were to pass through a special permit issued by the Planning Board, this type of parking arrangement could be established. And I'll go into more detail. There's a memorandum from Carol Hamilton that will be taken up under correspondence, but it provides some flexibility for what we believe in the future will be some opportunities with potential developments.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments at this time? It's going to be coming up later on in a Board-to-Consider item, but does anyone have any, anything that they'd like to put out on the table? Are we all set to proceed?
No, just, I'll just simply say, I was, the memorandum from Carol Hamilton that talks about Article 4 was useful to me, and I was glad to hear Mr. Hall say that we'll delve into that, I guess, probably next on the communications. But it helped me understand what I was reading in Article 4, because I wasn't sure what the intent of that was or what was changing. So I guess we'll, when we get to that point, we can delve a little bit deeper.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. Communications, please.
Communications, the first item, and I'll just read this into the record, is a memorandum from Carol Hamilton, Director of Planning and Conservation, in essentially describing the basis for Article 4, which is proposed on the warrant. "The purpose of this zoning change is to allow the sharing of parking for parcels that are not in common ownership. Along Route 38, a type of shared parking is allowed on lots like the Wilmington Plaza and Wilmington Crossing through a formula found in the zoning bylaws to allow dissimilar uses to share parking. This would extend the ability through agreement of the owners and a special permit from the Planning Board to parcels not in the same ownership. Ballard Vale Street is a good example of where this might occur. Most of the industrial buildings along Ballard Vale Street, when they were constructed, were required to provide a massive amount of parking. These requirements have been reduced through subsequent zoning changes. With the allowance of retail uses and potentially restaurants in that area, it is possible that owners would agree to allow a restaurant, for example, to share parking in an office building parking lot on weekends and evenings, when the restaurant use would be high and the office use parking requirements low. Easements to allow this would be drawn and submitted to the Planning Board with application for the special permit. If the Planning Board finds no detriment to the neighborhood, a special permit could be granted. Should the use for such shared parking, which shared parking was sought subsequently changed, the special permit expires." So it would only, the special permit would only run with the particular use.
So I'm sorry, may I ask, Madam Chair, through you to the Town Manager, if this article passes, does it give the Planning Board the authority to issue special permit? Is that what I'm reading?
Yes.
Okay. And currently, they would not have that authority under the way, the way the law is written today?
That's right. Not for parcels that are, only for parcels that are in common ownership could shared parking be authorized. In cases where they're, the area is not in common ownership, they would not currently have that authority.
Okay.
Madam Chair, just a quick question. Jeff, do you know if any other communities have these kind of requirements, or these zoning in other communities? Is that something that you can find out?
We can certainly find out. I don't offhand know, but...
I'm not saying you'd have the answer not, but if you could just find out if other communities have adopted something like these relative to their communities?
Okay.
And who's the voting authority if they do have that?
You know, I'm thinking of, like, Burlington, is it the Tavern on the Square or something? There's a restaurant over there across from where the Dandelion Green used to be. The parking is in back of that restaurant, effectively, which is also parking for the industrial park that's, all the businesses in that area. So I think that probably is the kind of arrangement that was described here. That's the one I'm envisioning, anyway. But it would be interesting to see what Burlington or other communities have done.
Well, it's also, I think, relevant to the memo itself, the Wilmington Plaza, Wilmington Crossings. I mean, there's a lot of Chili's and Golden Ginger, for example. They're, you know, they share common parking spaces there. Those two eateries that share the same parking bank that's available. So we're already doing it in town now.
For common ownership, right.
For common ownership, yeah.
My sense is what we're going to see going forward is some additional development in North Reading. We've, I mean, North Reading, North Wilmington. We've seen that with Target, and I think they're really the, that's the beginning of additional development, whether it's restaurants or otherwise, that are going to want to cater to not only the businesses up there, but the after-hours population. So in my estimation, this article would provide a measure of flexibility to those opportunities, for those opportunities.
Yes.
Yeah, the specific scenario that I thought about when I read the Planning Director's memorandum is, in a roundabout way, commercial property owners already have the ability to do this by creating condominiums. That, you know, so you've got a commercial site A, commercial site B. A wants to use some of B's parking area, so they just create a condo, and it comes under common ownership, and then they get their parking area. So it seems to me that, in an indirect way, property owners can already do this, so it makes sense to allow it, you know, under a special permit and kind of gain a little bit more control over that, and promote the kinds of specific uses we want to promote and the kinds of economic development we want to promote. So I haven't heard any downside yet, but certainly that strikes me as a big upside.
Next, under correspondence, we have a couple of pieces of correspondence from Tennessee Gas. They are, in the first instance, informing us of their intentions to set up a number of regional meetings. It's noted on behalf of Tennessee Gas Pipeline, the Northeast Energy District Project. This correspondence serves as a brief update. Tennessee Gas has been in communication with elected officials and landowners regarding the proposed expansion of Tennessee gas systems. They go on to note that the project is a federal undertaking that is regulated by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission under Section 7(c) of the Natural Gas Act. On September 15, Tennessee Gas requested authorization to use the FERC's pre-filing process for the NED project. The FERC approval, the FERC approved Tennessee's request on October 2, and FERC's docket number is PF1422-000. Tennessee Gas strives to keep the public sector and the stakeholders apprised of their efforts, and they provide some contact information. They are providing a series of open house meetings where there'll be, seeking input, and there's dates beginning in November and continuing through December. The one that is closest to us and which I anticipate we will have representation at will be the meeting on November 12 in North Reading, North Reading High School, 191 Park Street in North Reading. There are other dates here. Pepperell, Drakeett, Hollis, New Hampshire, Northborough, Mass., Ashburnham, Orange, Mass., Greenfield, Shoddyck, New York, Pittsfield, Mass., Shelburne, Mass., and Farmington, Connecticut. So there's a series of meetings. We also have correspondence, again, on this project. This is directed to Wilmington as a property owner of some of the areas they're looking to perhaps extend their line through. And it essentially provides the same information, providing notice of the actions they've taken with FERC. Just by way of some information here, it notes, "The project involves the installation of approximately 167 miles of new and co-located pipeline and two pipeline looping segments in Tennessee's existing 300 line in Pennsylvania and compression facilities designed to in Tennessee's existing 300 line in Pennsylvania and compression facilities designed to receive gas from Tennessee's 300 line for deliveries to Tennessee systems near Wright-Ny-York Iroquois Gas Transmission System and/or the proposed Constitution Project referred to as the supply path component of the NED project. In approximately 177 miles of new and co-located pipeline facilities extending from Wright-Ny-York to an interconnect with the joint facilities of the Maritime and Northeast Pipeline System and Portland National Natural Gas Transmission System at Drakeett, Massachusetts, and Tennessee's existing 200 line near Drakeett, Massachusetts, referred to as the market path component of the NED project." In addition, the project includes the construction of eight new compressor stations, modifications and an existing compressor station, and approximately 73 miles of market delivery laterals and pipelines, looping segments located in the states of Pennsylvania, New York, Massachusetts, Connecticut, and New Hampshire. To minimize impacts from construction, the proposed pipeline facilities will be co-located with existing utility corridors where practicable and feasible." They essentially provide the same information about the meeting dates.
Madam Chair, I was just checking my calendar here, looking at the dates. On November 12th, it's Wednesday in North Reading. I know Jeff had mentioned that we'd have representation there, and I think that's appropriate, and I'm glad to hear it. I want to stay apprised of this and educated as much as I can absorb information, so it'll be my intention to go as well and, you know, complement any additional information that our representatives from the DPW or whomever you send, Engineering Department, go. My desire would be to have communication and conversation with some of our maybe neighboring towns and our colleagues, Board of Selectmen members from North Reading, et cetera, just to sort of take their temperature a little bit on how they're feeling or how their populations are feeling about the project. So, I intend to go.
Jeff, I would just kindly ask that when it gets closer, maybe if you can send a note out to the board, just confirming the date and time and just who from Wilmington is going to be attending, just in case if one of us, you know, can't make it, that we want to ask a question or want to share information with whoever is attending for Wilmington, that we collectively have all our thoughts in the room?
Okay, will do.
If you don't mind. Thank you.
Next, under correspondence is a memorandum I sent the board previously on the 17th of October. This is just to notify the board that I received word from Jim DiLorenzo, the EPA Project Manager for the Olin Project, that apparently New England Transrail has requested to meet with EPA to discuss the Olin property. From what Mr. DiLorenzo has indicated, appears that New England Transrail is interested in purchasing the property and is looking to meet with EPA. I believe there's a date in early November that Olin will be, that New England Transrail will be meeting with EPA. I'll confirm the date and make the board aware of that. But as a result of this, I've notified Town Council that we need to be prepared to gear up in the event that we, that notice is filed with the Surface Transportation Board. I've also notified Mike Webster from GeoInsight. You may recall the last time this came up, GeoInsight did a fair amount of work in terms, in conjunction with Town Council, in essentially making the case as to why the proposal on the table at that time was not advantageous to the town. So, we want to make sure that we're prepared to do the same going forward.
Madam Chair, I've got to ask the manager a quick question. Just refresh my memory, New England Transrail, isn't it, their intent to basically put contamination on the Transrail, bring it and try to somehow put on the property to see what they need to do as far as future use?
Well, the proposal that was, that they brought forward previously was to serve as a offloading and onloading location for various types of waste. And it was, they were somewhat nondescript, I guess, to some measure, as to some of the things that they wanted to bring in and move out. But clearly, the types of waste that they were talking about raised some serious concerns. And quite frankly, it seems to me that, given the fact that we are still not at the point where the Olin site, which is a superfund site, has been fully evaluated in terms of the extent of contamination, we're close to that, as Jim DiLorenzo noted at our last meeting a few months ago. But they're still in the final stages of that process, and then coming up with a remediation plan, it just doesn't seem to me to make sense to be allowing a type of use that could further exacerbate a bad situation.
Yeah, that's why, Madam Chair, that's why I asked the question. I was pretty sure that was going to be the answer. I mean, I think the message should be loud and clear. We're looking for less contamination, not more contamination brought to the site. I mean, it's simple as that. And I agree that, you know, the board will do everything in its power to make sure we try to stop this, obviously. And it's back, it's back again. Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, the only thing that I would add, Madam Chair, is that we're obviously going to have a new congressional delegate for the district soon enough, and we have a new senator since the last time this was on the front burner. So, at the appropriate time, just ask that the manager include that component of the response in our overall strategy. When this was, you know, an issue on the front burner several years back, I had indicated to people, you know, numerous times, it's probably the one issue where I've never seen a single bit of disagreement over in town. I mean, it was literally unanimous, you know, as to what this community wanted. And, you know, we just took it on as many different fronts as we could, and I think that's the way we have to proceed if, you know, if NET brings their proposal forward.
I mean, a lot of you that are sitting on the board have been part of this for many, many years, and Jeff, you know, in your role in the town manager's office, to me, it just doesn't make logical sense, just on its face, that we would even, you know, consider this at this point, but, you know...
Madam Chair, like Mr. Newhouse said, I served on the board, Mr. Newhouse, for a period of time, and back then, it was a beverage distributor that were looking to purchase the property. And we had those individuals that were opposed since Olin, since day one. That was something I could support, was a beverage distributor. They were going to clean up the area, put a beverage distributor in there, you know, whatever canned sodas or whatever they were talking back then, it was a great idea. But somehow, it went away, because obviously, the opponents took them to task. And I think that would be a lot more desirable than having more contamination brought in. And once again, we're looking for less, not more. Thank you.
Is it premature or imprudent to request? I hold Mr. DiLorenzo and EPA in high regard for what they've done thus far, but this is a meeting between EPA and New England Transrail. Do we, are we allowed to, or is it, would be appropriate for us to have a seat at the table at that meeting, or is that a private meeting between them that we hope to get the reports from? In other words, can we send Town Council or someone from the town to that meeting to listen in?
I don't think that that's necessarily our place, and I can certainly talk to Jim about that, but my expectation is he will keep us informed as to what comes out of that meeting.
Yeah, I guess going forward, you know, I would hope that we'd have a place at the conversation, at least to be privy to the conversations going on. I can, I agree with you, at this stage, it would probably be indelicate to suggest it, but hopefully, if they continue their conversations, we can be play, we can be in the conversations.
That's a good point what Mr. Newhouse said. Our federal delegation, let them be aware of it, and we're counting on them, and I'm sure they're going to deliver.
I find it kind of frustrating that Olin, at this stage of the game, would, I guess, openly engage with this company and not just simply say, you know what, we're not interested in selling to you at this time. But, you know, listen, I can't begrudge a private company for doing what they want to do to keep their business profitable or whatever, but given the history there, it certainly feels to me like it's not the ideal type of company to sell their property to.
Next, under correspondence, we have a letter from RMLD, and they are informing the town about their plans for essentially changing up their process for pruning trees and bushes and so on that impact the utility lines. They note in here that approximately 29% of Reading Municipal Light Company's power outages over the last five years were the result of trees and limbs coming into contact with power lines. They go on to note that the recommended standard is that tree limbs be pruned to a clearance standard of 10 feet from the power lines. At the moment, they are using a four, anywhere from four feet to eight feet, and essentially what it's resulting in, in addition to power outages, is the need for more frequent trimming, often twice a year, and their expectation is, once they change up this system, it would, the trimming would happen less often. They're talking about putting a bid together to hire a firm that is licensed in this type of work, to come up with a vegetation management plan, a hazardous tree plan, and an integrated vegetation plan. They've been in touch with the four communities' DPW directors and will continue to do so. Just for the board's information, I wanted to provide the invitation for bid that is going out with respect to surplus of vehicles and equipment. Every couple of years or so, we put out an invitation for bid. In this case, most of the items on here are vehicles, in many cases, Crown Vics that were formerly used as police vehicles. There's some box trucks, a mini, school mini bus, van. There's 28 items altogether on the list. And so, the deadline for sealed bids is November 19th at 1:00 p.m. Would just note also that all items are available for inspection Monday through Friday during the hours of 6:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Public Works Building at 135 Andover Street. All items are sold as-is, without warranties of any kind, and fitness for a particular purpose, and must, and most are in need of some repair. Successful bidders are expected to render payment made by cash or bank check payable to the town of Wilmington in full and collect their purchase within five days of the notification of bid acceptance. Items not collected within five days will be offered to the second highest bidder. Would note that the town of Wilmington reserves the right to waive any informalities and to reject any and all bids or parts thereof deemed not in the town's best interest, so...
Interesting order of communications.
I'm sorry?
Yes, it is.
We have correspondence from Joan Butler from Minuteman Senior Services. This is outlining the amount of service that Minuteman Senior Services has provided to the town of Wilmington in fiscal 14. She notes that 1,340 residents in Wilmington were served, and estimates the value of those services to be $802,518. Notes that the mission is to help seniors and individuals with disabilities live in a setting of their choice by engaging in community resources and supporting caregivers. And goes on to note that the assessment for fiscal 16 is $5,111.
If I may, Madam Chair. I just feel compelled just to point out that particularly in my line of work, I come across different, what I consider to be quasi-government agencies, you know, these nonprofits that exist on government grants, and oftentimes left scratching my head why the whole system makes sense, but not in this case. I mean, you look at the numbers, boy, we get a terrific amount of service and quality service for that assessment. So, I just thought it was worth noting that, you know, giving Minuteman their props for providing, I think, an important public service.
Definitely.
And the final piece of correspondence is from Jane Lyman, who is the Government and Regulatory Affairs Manager at Xfinity. "In keeping with our ongoing effort to provide regular updates regarding our service, I am writing to inform you effective December 18th, 2014, Xfinity 3D will no longer be available," and provides information for questions. Would you like me to continue to board to consider?
Yes, please.
Board to consider, the first request is from Sarah Cregino of Denman Brooks &amp; Company for an annual auctioneer's license for property located at 5 Waltham Street. This request was submitted on October 10th, and Ms. Cregino notes, she's a graduate of New England School of Auctioneering in Massachusetts, auctioneer number 03247, requesting permission to run a general purpose auction at 5 Waltham Street, Wilmington, on November 15th, 2014, and then bi-monthly after the new year. The Police Department, Chief Begonis notes, "The Wilmington Police Department has reviewed the annual auctioneer's license request of Ms. Sarah Cregino of Denman Brooks &amp; Company, 5 Waltham Street, Wilmington, Mass. We have found no information to indicate any unfavorable recommendation." The board would be asked to take a vote to grant the auctioneer's, annual auctioneer's license, which would...
So, who? Second?
Most of them made in seconded. Just a quick question from a housekeeping standpoint, forgive me if I miss this, but the, it appears this is a surety bond, you know, does that cover the insurance, like the insurance portion of the application? Do you know?
The insurance portion of the application?
So, in other words, here, like where they typically have an insurance carryout, you know, for like the workman's comp, is the surety bond that was provided, in this case, adequate for the request? I'm assuming that it is, but typically, we see like an insurance binder that goes with it.
Definitely, workers' comp, you're asking if workers' comp would be covered?
So, you don't need a separate insurance binder beyond the surety bond? Okay.
In the case of workers' comp, where it's one individual, I don't believe that there's a requirement for workers' comp.
I think the surety, Madam Chair, is if, in her capacity as an auctioneer, she breaches a fiduciary duty through that process, that's the purpose of the surety.
Okay. Okay. Most of them made in seconded. All those in favor? Anonymous.
Do you wish them luck?
I do. We have, Board to Consider, the request of Joseph Martinello, representing Where One Wilmington, to conduct the 2015 Wilmington Walk for Kim Forte on Sunday, April 26, 2015. I would just note that I do have a recommendation from the Police Chief, Mike Begonis, indicating he once again looks forward to working with Joe Martinello and the organizers of the road race in memory of Kim Forte. The department confirms the date of April 26, 2015, to hold the race. It has been customary in the planning in the past, logistics in staggered times should present, be present without an issue, so he has no problem... It has been customary in the planning in the past, logistics in staggered times should present, be present without an issue, so he has no problem with the date and time that was requested. Board would, ask the board for a vote.
Jane, do we have a motion to that effect?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, I'll move that we approve the Where One Wilmington's request for April twenty-sixth to hold the Kim Forte race.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous, thank you.
And then finally, under the Board to Consider, you're asked to consider signing the warrant for the special town meeting to be held on December fourth, which is a Thursday evening, at the middle school auditorium. There were no petition articles that were received.
Do we have a motion?
I move the board sign a warrant for the special town meeting to be held on Thursday, December fourth, two thousand fourteen.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor? Unanimous. Public comments? New Business and Committee reports, starting on my left.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On Friday, October seventeenth, I attended at the, I think I went to Bedford, yes, Bedford Town Hall, Old Town Hall, the Legislative Breakfast, and at the, hosted by the Massachusetts Municipal Association. A number of subjects were discussed, and I won't bore you tonight with all the nuances of it. Jeff and I have had some conversation, and I acknowledge that I owe you an email, Jeff, about some of the discussion. John Robertson, who is the Legislative Director from the Massachusetts Municipal Association, wrapped up two thousand fourteen and really talked about two thousand fifteen and sixteen, and unrestricted government aid and the plans that the MMA has to work closely with our new governor, whoever that may be, as well as the legislators that are in place at that time. So it was a very interesting conversation, spirited participation from fellow select people from various communities in the region, as well as town managers and assistant town managers. So I'm certainly glad, one-on-one, if anyone wants to engage in conversation about what went on there, what was discussed there, please see me. I will also share with you, we may have already received this, but I brought, I got extra copies, so I'll send them down the line. It's the Massachusetts Municipal Association offers ten partnership policies to build a stronger Commonwealth. And these are available to the communities and to the public from the Massachusetts Municipal Association. They published this about ten years ago, and they decided it was time to sort of re-up it, and it's specifically intended to be a guideline to the new governor and to his or her administration when coming in, to get a, at a glance, understanding of the priorities and the mission of the Massachusetts Municipal Association, acting on our behalf as municipalities. So it's an interesting read. It kind of takes volumes and volumes of content and breaks it down into a few pages that's easy to get through, and I've enjoyed reading it, so I share that with you. That is all, the only other thing I wanted to mention is, I saw coverage of the Horribles Parade that happened, I think, just yesterday, right, if I'm not mistaken? I regret that I couldn't be there, but it looks like it was a lot of fun by everybody, including especially our police officers. And that being said, I also just want to remind residents out there that this coming Friday is Halloween, which it'll be dark and there'll be kids on the streets, so please watch out for your neighbors and be careful out there, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay.
All set.
Okay. So just a couple of quick things, wanted to share that we had a Yantel Development Committee meeting last week, and we, as a committee, did approve a final concept plan. And as indicated in the public forum, we were able to approve a concept plan that represents about a four-point-five million dollar project with the intent to raise a minimum of one million dollars in private funds to bring the anticipated project cost down to three-point-five million. I will be working with the town manager to work on the RFP process for the next stage in this project, and we will be certainly sharing more public developments as they become available. Wanted to just share that in light of all of the recent activity with the special town meeting that's coming up, that by no means does this chill this project publicly, this is still a, very much on the forefront for the town, and we will be proceeding accordingly. I also want to share that today, Selectmen Shampoo and I had an opportunity to sit down with the Superintendent Mary Dwyer of Wilmington Public Schools, we spent about two hours with her, as, at her request and invitation, as we mentioned in the last meeting, for the superintendent's entry plan into the Town of Wilmington. And I don't want to speak for Michael, but I was very impressed with her, fully engaged, certainly has hit the ground running. She was very open and receptive to comments, questions, feedback. She offered a lot of information back, and certainly was very complimentary of you, Jeff, as the town manager, and all of the town administration welcoming her to the town, and very optimistic. I thought we always had a bright future, but I feel like it's even brighter with her at the helm. So I don't know, Michael, if you want to make any comments.
Yeah, I mean, I corroborate what you say. I have met Superintendent Dwyer a couple of times, sort of informally up until today, and having the opportunity to sit with you and converse with her, I feel very strong that we are in very capable and, in very good hands going forward, especially with so much on the radar screen in our school district, together she with the school committee and working with the government here at Town Hall. I believe that she's, she's the right person for the job, and I feel what I really liked about it, and I mentioned to you, Judy, is that I like this open dialogue, the open communication, and I don't mean to suggest at all that we didn't have an open communication with her predecessor, but right out of the gate, she's established an open conversational dialogue between all the boards. So, yeah, I found it a very useful and productive and beneficial couple hours spent. Thank you.
Thank you. So that's all I have, and if we can move on to important dates, thank you.
Through November twenty-ninth, we have curbside collection of yard waste. October twenty-ninth is a brush drop-off Old Main Street, eight A.M. to two P.M. November second, the Healden Tavern has their next open house, two P.M. to four P.M. November first is another brush drop-off Old Main Street, nine A.M. to four P.M. November fourth is the state elections, polls open at seven A.M. and will close at eight P.M. November fifth, another brush drop-off Old Main Street, eight A.M. to two P.M. Again, November eighth, brush drop-off Old Main Street, nine A.M. to four P.M. November tenth, the next Board of Selectmen's meeting, right here, Room nine, seven P.M. November eleventh, Veterans Day Ceremony, Town Common, eleven A.M. Just to note, town offices will be closed. November thirteenth, registration deadline for Recreation Junior Basketball, grades one and two. November eighteenth is the Joint Finance Committee and Planning Board Public Hearing. This is with respect to the, respect to the special town meeting, and it will be held at the Town Hall in the auditorium, seven P.M. November nineteenth is the next High School Building Committee here at the Town Hall, Room nine, six-thirty P.M.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous. Good night.